Welcome to the September 27, 2022, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions or requests, must address the pending issue and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes, regardless of the number of items identified. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the City Council shall be placed in the box on the table in the chamber.
Thank you, City Clerk. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meeting on August 9, 2022, and the special City Council meeting on September 14, 2022?
So moved.
I have a motion by the Vice Mayor.
Second.
Second by Member Stokoe. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Minutes pass. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. I'd like to do two agenda item changes that will require a vote for both. I'd like to move item 9C to now.
Perfect. Okay. Need a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We have a citizen that wants to speak if you vote on moving an item.
He wants to speak on moving an item?
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming you're that citizen. Do we have to do that? I mean...
Of course, if the item is moved, then he'll obviously have an opportunity to speak on that item when it is moved, and that'll be the proposition before council. So we will not take away anyone's right to speak. It's just we're on the agenda, we're going to move that item.
You go that? You'll speak on this topic when we get to the cards on this topic, which we're just moving it up. I'll leave that alone. I'll leave that to City Attorney. You tell me.
The citizens have a right to speak and participate before you vote on that agenda item. This is a decision on whether or not to move the item up in the agenda. Well, if you decide to do that, then yes, they will have an opportunity to speak on that item.
That means I get to run this meeting, so with that, we're going to move, and you can talk about that.
Second.
All right, so we're moving forward with that. I need a motion to move it. Who made the motion? I got a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second from Member Stokoe. All those in favor say yes.
Yeah.
Opposed? Passes. We moved it.
Second item, sir, I'd like to add to my report under action items, a Bovard County School Presentation Update.
You got that, Member Jordan, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Second.
Just to clarify, that's to allow BPS to do a presentation?
Yes, sir. You actually discuss that during my portion during action items, yes.
So we have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Stokoe. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Passed.
Item 9C is a conditional use permit, number 5, 2022, for Indian River City United Methodist Church Challenge Course. City Attorney will read your quasi judicial procedures, and I will introduce the item after that.
During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the City Council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the City Clerk. City Clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the City Council sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Staff and applicant, have all witnesses that intend to speak signed an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi judicial item, please submit a card at this time to the Clerk. City Clerk, have all agenda items properly been advertised?
Yes, sir.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, verbal or written, outside the hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received an expert opinion regarding the quasi judicial item, said visit or opinions shall be disclosed. If there are written ex parte communications exist, verify that the applicant has received those and has an opportunity to review and is ready to proceed.
I have talked to several people on the committee. I don't know if it's a committee, but talked to several people, saw the area. In full disclosure, I'm a member of the church that this will be, Indian River City United Methodist Church, where this facility will be put up. But I was not influenced in any way on how I feel about it. I am in good standing with the church.
So are you...
Just for the record, I tie the online. Say again?
So Mayor, as you said, are you able to render an impartial decision based on the evidence presented tonight?
Yes, absolutely.
The Plan and Zoning Commission considered this at their 21 September meeting and unanimously recommended approval. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow an outdoor challenge course as an outdoor recreation use at the Indian River City United Methodist Church located at 1355 Cheney Highway. The challenge course requires a CUP as an outdoor recreation and commercial amusement use per Section 28, 276 of the code. Mr. Parrish is here to go over this with you and answer any questions that you may have.
I'll just briefly describe what's being presented to you tonight. On page 137 of your packet is really the crux of the criteria that we use to review the conditional use permit. We found the application to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, specifically Future Land Use Policy 1.9.1. We also found it consistent or not in conflict with nuisance factors. The only thing that we could identify that would possibly be a nuisance issue would be lighting, but the applicant is not proposing that. In fact, we proposed a condition that the operation of the use would be between dusk and dawn, or dawn and dusk, excuse me. And so if they do propose to come later with some, a lighting plan, that would probably have to come back before you as an amendment of this conditional use permit. We did not see any issues with screening or buffering requirements and general compatibility. The proposed use it's going to have is an outdoor recreational use, so in the zoning district, it does require this conditional use permit. Couldn't find any special conditions in the code specific to this particular use, so we just reviewed it based on the standard criteria. The height of the poles, structures, would be 38 feet, and we did not see any issue with that as well. There is an image or illustration of the location of where this is going to be in relation to the existing church on page 140 of your packet. The proposal is to utilize the existing parking lot with the church as a means of accessing this and servicing this use. Then they also have a play area and what they've identified as a pumpkin patch. But basically, the challenge course is what's triggering this conditional use permit. They're not proposing an additional access point off of Barna. Based on what's been given to us and what we've reviewed, we did not find anything inconsistent with this, with the comprehensive plan, and we found it consistent with the criteria of the zoning, and we recommend approval with one condition. I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Go ahead, Member Stokoe.
Yep. Thanks, Brad. So looking at this, it looks like the zoning is correct for this type of use, the community commercial.
Correct. A conditional use permit is required for an outdoor recreational use, and that's what we determined this to be. And so that's required this process.
Do you know why we require a CUP for that particular use in this zoning?
The outdoor recreation use is more of an umbrella use. A lot of things could be captured into that. So you can have a stadium, you can throw, you can have an outdoor golfing range, whatever it might be, some kind of amusement use that's outdoors, could potentially have a nuisance issue related to the adjacent properties. In this case, the only thing we could see was potentially light, but that's not going to be an issue here.
Okay, and then that, yes, that was my last clarifying question. I think that the reason we do have it would be to measure these different factors, the nuisance, to make sure everything's consistent and if there would be potentially an issue. But thanks for the staff report, because I think it does address any potential concerns, which it doesn't appear that there are any. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm still trying to understand the condition of dusk to dawn. And I think you were talking about if there was lighting there. I'm just not feeling comfortable that we need to tell them that they can't utilize the facility when they want to use it. So explain to me why we have to have... Because you say it's something else that bothered me, and that was the fact that they would have to come back if they installed lighting, correct? Because of the condition?
Correct. Well, let's say they gave us a lighting plan. They proposed to have the use operate after hours in the dark.
Yeah.
We would evaluate that lighting plan to see if it's going to have any kind of bleeding up or to the adjacent properties or kind of visual impact or nuisance impact to the adjacent properties. Looking at the surrounding uses in this property, probably minimal impacts it might be, but that really depends on the kind of lighting they would propose to put out there for these structures. If they're not going to propose lighting, we felt that it would be necessary that if in the event they do propose it in the future, we would like to evaluate it through the public hearing process. That's our recommendation.
Okay. Yeah, I understand that. I'm just looking at the adjacent properties. What is that to the north of it, those three buildings? Are those commercial buildings or what?
Yes, sir. Those are commercial buildings on the south side of Cheney there, yes.
Okay, and then the south of that, what is that?
That is one of the city's fire stations.
That's what I thought. So, I mean, where's the nuisance?
There's not.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand why we want to put a condition, and when there's no houses or anything, it's all commercial property there, so, okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Anything, Member Stokoe again?
Yeah, just to clarify on that, looking at the map, I think you had one chart in here that said what the zoning is to the other areas. It looks like public, community commercial, community commercial, and multifamily high density. I see your concern, if they were to potentially put in big lighting, and then there's somebody living there, and then that's going into their home.
Think of a use of outdoor recreation, a soccer field next to an existing subdivision. Would definitely probably want to have some kind of outdoor lighting, which could be very tall poles. Imagine the kind of lighting you see at Chain of Lakes, for example. So that's what we anticipated. We don't know that because we don't have a lighting plan, but that's why we want to recommend this condition to allow us that opportunity in the event that do propose that in the future.
Okay, last question. So if they did want to potentially operate after hours and add the lighting, is there any way to amend this current CUP so they don't have to pay the additional fee to come back for the lighting? And I'm asking all this before I even know what you guys' intentions are, but I'd just like to be prepared.
I would recommend maybe a twist on this. Maybe if you propose a condition that if they have a lighting that is a certain...
Okay.
...loom, I don't know. And then if they go beyond, if they propose something beyond that, that ought to be a trigger.
Okay, I like that, to your point as well. Just looking at the surrounding properties and seeing if it would be a nuisance at this time. I'm not sure it would be, and I just don't like the idea of limiting unless... If I did see a blaring subdivision right up to there, I'd be like, okay, yes, let's definitely do it. But yeah, I like your idea with potentially adding something that could be a cost-saving for them.
Member Robinson?
Yeah, I like the lighting restriction, because I know there's still a lot of homes still being built out there, and they're building right along with last month or so, or a couple of months ago, with someone digging out a place, cutting down trees to build right in the vicinity, right close to the fire station there. I live that way, so I see all the activity that is going down there all the time. So it wouldn't, putting something in there, they wouldn't have to pay it. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. But I do think that it's a good thing that they could come back, because the direction of the lighting and all of that, the illumination and everything would play a role on the housing that would go in there in the future, if any goes in there. All right?
Vice Mayor? You and Stokoe keep bouncing back.
Oh, sorry about that. I was about to call you Sean. You're not Sean. I'm getting old, man, I'm sorry about that. When it comes down to lighting, I'm thinking about publics and some of the other commercial things. There is a requirement for them to have downlighting, correct?
That's correct, yep.
So if we say we agree with this, as long as they, and if they, in the future, want to put lighting in, it has to be downlighting, then there's no need for them to come back and spend more money to ask for approval for the lighting.
Potentially, yes. Do you want to suggest that?
Yep. Thanks. Bye.
All right, this is where we call upon the applicant, and my understanding is they're all ready to answer questions. But Mr. Baggett, could you come up, please, be one of the representatives? And the reason I do that is when I said that I spoke to a committee person, Steve is the one who talked to me, and the reason he talked to me was quite honestly, he is a guy who's done this challenge course thing for a long time. And in a nutshell, I think it would be good to have, you know, for the people to see, just give us an idea of what a challenge course is, and what do you do with it? Is that microphone on? I can't tell. There you go. Perfect. That's a challenge.
My name's Steve Baggett, owner of Titus Vine Incorporated. A challenge course is a bunch of mental and physical challenges that gets teams. We're going to be using teams. It's not going to be for amusement. We bring teams in or groups in, so we, and our purpose is to make them work together, work on their communication, problem solving, conflict resolution, different teamwork aspects. And we use the games to get them in the situation that we can talk about. It gives us a platform. We've been working with leadership, well, Lead Bovard since 1996, so anybody who's gone through that has come through our program out at Canterbury Retreat and Conference Center. We started down in Palm Bay with the Police Athletic League in 97, built a course down there on the BCC property at the time, and we worked through that and had a really good effect on the community. I've lived here in Titusville the entire time, but I helped build Palm Bay, went out to Seminole County and helped build Seminole County with their Leadership Seminole and different things out there with the police force and all that. We're currently working with the cops and kids in Cocoa to help build the relationship there with the police and the students there. And it's just, we want to bring it here. We want to come here to, this is where I live. I want to build this community. We want to work with the schools. We work with several different schools. We've been taking a lot of money from Bovard over to Seminole, and we want to bring Seminole money back over to Bovard now, and Orange County money back over to Bovard. And we want to be, this is our home base. We've been over in Seminole County for the last 26 years or so, and we want to bring it here. We want, this is our home, and this is our community.
In a nutshell, it's kind of team building, isn't it?
Yes, that's all it is.
And I know you just talked about cops and kids, and obviously, we'd like to bring that over here as well.
Absolutely.
And I thought that was very fascinating. I guess you could even get with some of the youth programs and have them work on their team building, whether it be a soccer league or astronaut high school football.
Absolutely. Even county commissions, city commissions here.
All right, guys.
I think that'd be the first, I think that'd be really great.
Yeah, we're not allowed to work together like that. There's a sunshine law that keeps me away from that.
That's true, really.
Anyway, hold on there, because you've got a few questions. That's awesome. Member Stokoe?
Yep. I have done Lead Bovard, and I did your course.
Awesome.
And it was amazing, yes. It was, man, one of my friends got a bruise. It's challenging, but I think you answered my question. My hope was that you guys would be partnering with and allowing other groups to come in and utilize the course.
Absolutely. That's what we want to build community.
And thank you for coming to Titusville, because I think it would be a real huge asset for our community.
Thank you. We're glad to be home.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just want to understand, as you heard us debate about the time that you're going to do this, and my vision was you shouldn't stop people if they decide they want to do something at 8 or 9 o'clock, because we do have time change, right?
Right, yes, sir.
So is that something that you care about, or are we just talking, trying to support something that you don't even need?
Well, we're working with groups and outside groups. It would probably be between the dusk and dawn. But if we did some church groups or something like that, then maybe we would go into the, later on, possibly down the road, just people are off work, and so it would give us a chance. But we don't have that in the plans right now, but in the future, we might. Absolutely.
We'll deal with that.
Thank you.
That'd be good. That's awesome. I see no other questions. You go ahead, let's go ahead and sit down, and we'll call you back up as the applicant if we need you. Cards, please?
Kelly McLester.
Thank you so much.
And then Stan Johnston.
Stan? You better come up.
And he's our last card.
Don't you pass on me now.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm supposed to do some disclosures and prejudicial interests and so forth. And as I told P and Z is that I've been a prayer group since about 1997, something like that, continuously till now at IRC. And I'm also with the Car Care Ministry. Been that for, I don't know, 15 years or so. I don't know, I don't remember how many years, but it's quite a while. And I did want to comment about my request to speak on this item as far as being brought forward, because the city of Titusville has a not-so-good reputation for tricks and deception. And those tricks include, like, for example, the city has, at times, brought forward items at the end of the meeting when no public is present, brought some items forward and voted on them or discussed them, like, for example, budget. And that was not very nice to do. And we've had some other things that the city has done nefariously. So in this particular case, is that the city has at times brought a motion forward and that was to be near the end of the meeting, and those in opposition expected it to be at the end of the meeting or forward, and they came in after it happened because they didn't know that it was going to be moved forward. So they anticipated, and the people who also may have anticipated to trick the public in that way. So I would like you to consider that when you do something forward and you do not allow, like Mr. Broome said, he's not going to allow me to speak, or you don't allow me to speak on that. In this particular case, I did not have objections to moving it forward, but I should let you know is that, hey, you know, I should have a voice in that. In consideration of what Mr. Baggett has brought forward is that this, I think, is a great idea for community, for teams, for fellowship, for recreational purposes. It's a great thing to do, and I'm certainly for it, even though I have, you know, I have these prejudicial interests. So I'm hoping that you will give it your approval. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And, oh, no, any other cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Applicant? You good? This is where you get to rebut anything that was said. I don't think you need to do that. All right, it's good. We're just following procedure. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve...
CUP.
The conditional use permit, number 5-2022, Indian River City Methodist Church Challenge Course with a condition that if they install tall lighting, I guess, how would you say it?
Mr. Jordan, maybe, can I ask, do you want to keep, are you proposing to keep the recommended condition from staff?
What I don't want is they have to come back, because I don't see anything around the area. I understand what Congressman Robinson is saying, but there's a lot of acreage around there.
But you're concerned about restricting their hours of operation?
Exactly.
So maybe the condition that we recommend it is not necessary.
Okay, so I'll just recommend approval of the CUP as written without condition.
City Attorney, we good?
Yes, sir. I just want to confirm with that motion to approve that it's your determination that the applicant has satisfactorily addressed the CUP criteria in Section 3476 of the code.
Correct.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor. I need a second.
Second with discussion.
I have a second with discussion from Member Stokoe. Member Stokoe? I have a second with discussion from Member Stokoe, Member Stokoe first.
Yeah, I, I think to address probably what Member Robinson's going to say, so if we remove the condition of the dawn to dusk, and so they can operate at night, are they able to put in lighting as they see fit, or what happens if they put in lighting that all of a sudden we're like, whoa, that's blasting, do we have any, you know what I'm trying to say?
So I was going to suggest that if you, it sounds like the issue is allow the use to operate anytime at their discretion, remove that, don't approve the staff's recommended condition, but replace it with a condition that allows them the flexibility to be able to propose lighting without having to come before City Council again. And I would recommend that, actually, because when I look at the code for lighting, it's specifically for parking lots, and about, and it does, but it does provide some standards for lumens and how they should be bleeding on other properties, we could certainly enforce that part, but just to clarify, it sounds like I would recommend, based on what I'm hearing, I would recommend maybe a condition saying that they don't have to come back with a proposal for a lighting. To council.
But it would go to staff to make sure?
Yeah, we would just review it.
You'd review it with no cost?
Yeah, we would just review it administrative level, based on the code requirements.
So that's where we're at?
Is that okay for you?
I would ask, what is staff's criteria when you review it?
So we would look at, see if there's a, lighting shall not be directed onto another lot or obscure driver's vision on public streets, all freestanding and building mounted light fixtures shall be downlit. Another criteria is that no lighting fixtures shall create more than two candles of light density at property line, those are just two examples, there are several others as well.
What section is that?
This is section 30 dash 192.
You're such an attorney.
It's on the record.
So, so just so, for clarification, were you able to add that?
Yes.
Is that what we just did?
We're adding that to my motion.
Yes, I would recommend a condition that the applicant can propose lighting for this use to meet, as long as it meets the code requirements, without an amendment to the CUP.
As long as it meets whatever that code number is.
230, 192?
Yes, the criteria, the city's lighting criteria in section 30 dash 192.
Dang.
That's my motion.
I got that right.
Hope Wanda has that over there.
Member Robinson.
She answered my question.
You good there?
She asked my question.
Okay, let's, let's digress, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Jordan, I have a second from Member Stokoe, with the addition of the lighting.
Lighting, right.
We're clear, City Attorney? Just say yes, we're good. All right, roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokoe? Yes.
Passed unanimously, thank you guys very much for being here. Appreciate you for bringing this, I think it's going to be a real add to our city, and like you said, conflict resolution, team building, it's exciting, but I'll watch.
No, we'll be the first ones, Mayor.
Thank you, guys. We'll hold like, one minute. And City Manager?
Yeah, Mayor and Counsel, since we do have an impending storm, and we do have another applicant present for item 9B, staff recommends that we move item 9B, which is the development agreement, number one, 2022 for tranquility's third amendment, to now.
Second.
Got a motion from Vice Mayor Jordan, second from Member Stokoe, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Carries. 9B.
The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning authority, unanimously recommended approval at their 21 September meeting. The applicant, Gary Allen Jr., on behalf of Sunbelt Titusville Investments LLC and Carolina Holdings II LLC, the owners are requesting the approval of an amendment to the development agreement for tranquility development, formerly known as Antigua Bay. The applicant is proposing two modifications, number one, the existing duration of the agreement for 10 years, from the effective date of the amendment, and two, to allow the administrator, to allow the administrator to allow development of parcels 11A and 11B preservation areas, consistent with section three, correction, section 6.3.3 modification classification table in the Development Review Procedures Manual. Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions and describe what this amendment's about.
I'll just briefly summarize, on page is 117 of your packet, is the modification table that is inside our city's code right now. It has a highlighted section about open space. This table we use for any time that an applicant requests to modify a master plan, we use this table to determine whether the modification that's being requested is significant or substantial, and if it's, I'm sorry, insignificant or substantial, if it's insignificant, then we can process it, the change or amendment administratively. An example here is if they impact an open space area of less than 5% of the total open space for an approved master plan, then it can be approved administratively, provided other conditions are required here too. Anything more than that would have to come before you. The applicant tonight on, I'm going to refer you to page 124 of your packet, and that's the draft development agreement, and you'll see in the strike-through underline language there, the first amendment that the applicant is requesting is to extend the expiration of this agreement, of the governing agreement by 10 years, and then on the next page, on 125, you'll see the language related to removing, having to come before you for any changes of the boundaries of parcels 11A and 11B, and remove that from the, from the agreement, and then rely on that table that it has pointed out to you for any future amendments to open space for the overall development. Those are the two main, actually, the only two amendments that are being proposed to you tonight. I'll try and answer any questions.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, it's more of a statement, and you just need to nod your head and say, yes, you are correct. Can you do that?
That's what I ask, it never happens.
It never does. Well, first of all, Counsel, I would say that, and we discussed this many times when tranquility bay came up here, the number one, the most important thing to us, was that they maintain the number of houses that they were going to build, based on our requirements, that is correct.
Those conditions have not changed, no?
Exactly. And because the first part portion, as far as going from five years to 10 years, to me, it is pretty reasonable, just based on my experience of how we had to develop my charter school, it took some years to get it done, and I don't think it's extraordinary at all when you're talking about development that has, what, 2,500, how was it, 2,600?
2,400 plus, yeah.
Plus a lot of other stuff that goes into that, and it takes time, and, you know, God forbid, we have another COVID or something else that is going to slow things down, so I have no problem with that. As far as the open space is concerned, if you remember, even with the Sears town, and the questions about what's open space and all this stuff, actually, what this applicant is asking for is to basically go through an open space for a road, or modify, or move the road because of requirements from another department. So this would also allow for Mr. Parrish to actually be the administrator to determine, based on the requirements, whether it's okay for them to move other things around as far as open space is concerned. So I, I think this is, will help develop tranquility bay, which we all want to be successful, and so what they're asking for, in my mind, is pretty reasonable.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I would just add to that, that I, I agree, and I think it's been obvious in my life that I really would like to see this project move forward, and the sooner the better, I think I say that every time we meet on tranquility bay, the sooner the better, and I am, I think that this council has voted yes on everything and every amendment needed, I will say that I am ready to do that again. When it comes to a timeframe, if there was any, I won't even call it a disagreement, I think 10 years is a little long, I would have thought, re-five year it, I'm not opposed to 10 years, though, if that's what needs to be done. Member Stokoe.
Yep. This is one of my favorite projects, it has been, and I hope this happens before 10 years. But Brad, a question for you, I think I mentioned this on our briefing, there's no need for a rezoning, for having infrastructure going through, open space, correct? Like, it still will remain open space with what they're proposing?
Well, the, well, this whole amendment is being triggered because of a requirement to come before you to impact an existing open space in parcel 11A. Right now, the agreement is written that it has to come before you to make any modifications to the boundaries of that, regardless of what the issue is.
Okay.
The issue that has come before us by the applicant, per, based on a site plan that we're in review right now, is the location of a roundabout has to be repositioned, and that's causing the alignment of a road to be forced to cut through that parcel. In order to approve that, it has to come before you. If this amendment is approved, then those kind of minor modifications, if they're determined to be minor modifications, won't have to come before you. So yes, it is going, they are proposing, in a site plan review that we're reviewing right now, an alignment that is going to cut through an approved open space area.
And that will be allowed to stay open space, correct?
Well, where the, so the road alignment is going to cut, is being proposed to cut through an existing open space, that portion would longer be open space.
What would it be considered?
Well, I think what you're referring to is the track that's open space, if they cut through it, will the rest of it still remain, be open space?
I guess, like, I guess we don't have to rezone that particular, when I think of open space, it's open space, and then we have a road coming in, is that okay that it still falls under the umbrella of the whole open space zoning?
Well, the purpose of the, of the table that we, I referenced here on page 117 of your packet, is to allow us to make those determinations, so the master plan was a, was a, was a high-level drawing of the whole development, and as they come in with different phases of site plans, that, once they do some ground truthing on the land there, they might have to make some modifications, that table's supposed to allow us to be able to make those modifications or approve them without having to go before you, if they're minor modifications.
Okay, and that was my second question, if, if we vote on it not having to come before us, it would be those types of modifications, that things are staying consistent, but they're running into something like the roundabout needs to be moved, it's going into the open space, and you guys would make that decision?
It leaves it to us, but obviously, each one is case-by-case basis, so we'll look at it, compare it to that table, if we determine that it's a significant change, then it will have to come before you again.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Member Robinson.
Yes, I, I am stuck on the fact that it should be no more than a five-year extension. This project has been going on for a long time, and it, evidently, it's a lot of things that are going to be changed along the roads, along the way with this roundabout, we don't actually know how that is going to affect the positioning of a lot of other things that, that may come about, and we have the 5%, is it 5% rule?
Yes, sir.
They change 5%, I think I got it highlighted in my packet.
5%.
The 5%. And, and I, and I think that five years is not to say that we're not going to give them another five years, if everything goes well, but I think we should stay at that five-year point, so that we, the, the manager, I mean, the overseers of the city, if you will, should have some, some say into that process. But moving this, and, and my concern, as I look at this, it, it's going to have some effects on some, several other things as it's moved around, and we don't know yet totally what they're asking for in this particular project, if I'm, if I'm not correct.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, I'm disagreeing with the Reverend on this one for sure, because of the fact that this is a pretty complex project, and for government to, to add their ideas in after five years, to me, it doesn't make any, any difference, it was five years or 10 years, the bottom line is, we have requirements that has to come through the city, and what they're looking for is one less thing they have to come to the city for, honestly. Hopefully, they can get everything done, but it is a very complex project.
I understand that, that many structures being built, it has to be complex, but it's been going on for a while as well.
And, and I understand that, but the, the bottom line is, it is being built, it's going to take a long time to get it done, and we are not experts at this. The bottom line to me, I keep saying it, is we have agreed to 2,600 houses, right, plus the other stuff there, and we should get out of trying to micromanage something like this, developer spends a lot of money on, on property like this, and we all want it, this is going to be the jewel of Titusville for sure, so I'm, I won't say I'm stuck on 10 years, but I'm just, I really just like government to, if you don't have to have a hand in something, then leave it alone, we got enough requirements without having to come back and spend money and time asking for, for permission, in my opinion.
I would say, and I don't think it's disagreeing, I think you're right there with me, I, I don't think we're micromanaging, I think we don't want to micromanage, I think that basically, I'd like them to do whatever they need to do and not see them again.
Right.
Until we go to the grand opening.
No, I agree.
I, I mean that seriously, and they don't want to come back in here either, so I'm all for whatever we got to do to do that, but I sure would like to think something, it could be done soundly in five years, but as I said before, I won't let that stop me from moving forward in 10 years, it is, it is, I want to move forward. Member Robinson.
I'm still saying, I understand what you said, I'm still, I, I am not one who believes in government interference, but I am one in, in oversight to make sure that every step is, is being approved by, and the citizens of this city knows what's going on.
Well, the bottom line to me is, we do have insight, because we've got staff who takes care of all those things.
Well, you know, that's why they're here again.
Yeah.
I mean, truthfully, because I'm thinking, when you mentioned that word "micromanage", I'm like, well, I didn't go to them, they came to me, but that's through staff, so it's, staff is dealing with that. So I feel like that there is good oversight, and when this comes to us, it's not because we had any discussions or made any changes, it's because something happened with discussion with staff, and they came here to get through it, around it, or to it. Member Stokoe.
Yeah, that was, question for staff, have you, in your opinion, have you seen extensions for 10 years, or is there a norm for five years? What's your opinion on?
The statute allows up to 30 years.
Okay.
I remember when I first started here, we had a provision in our code that allowed maxed development agreements to 10 years, period, you couldn't give even an extension beyond that, and it was several, a couple of years after I started here, that there was an amendment to the code to allow some to come in with, first, a five-year agreement, and then they can add, ask for something up to the max if they wanted to, per the statute, after that, but it's always a discretion of City Council.
Yeah, and I think that, to the mayor's point, we all want to see this project happen the best way possible, and I would venture to say, I don't think they want to take 10 years either.
No.
So, yeah, I'd like, I remember, I'm trying to remember back, remember that CUP that we kept extending, I think, for 14 years, when I first got on council? Yes, and we did that because we wanted the project to go through, and they needed it, so I think that we're all there, if it takes 10 years, we'll end up probably approving it, we just hope it doesn't take 10 years.
Mayor, you do have representatives here.
I know, I realize that, I was getting after her, just so you know.
Yep.
I'm moving right along, that's why these glasses are in the air, I was going to say, let's let them talk. But I can't just say that, I'm going to say, call the carts.
We had Rodney Honeycutt, that has a card.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue. Gary couldn't make it tonight, I think the storm's going to be in his back door next morning, tomorrow morning.
Not driving home.
Yep. So there's a couple of things that we're looking for in the development agreement amendment, one is the time extension, and it's like Brad said, the Florida statute says 30 years on a development agreement, and then you can come back and ask for more, Titusville's only five. The major, the major thing about that is you need some certainty if you're a developer, you know, you don't, you don't want to say every five years, I've got to go back, and, and that council can change, and when you say you hope it can be over in 10 years, I'm saying this is a 15-year project. I mean, there's 2,400 units, you, you think about it nowadays, from the time you say, I'm going to build a subdivision. the time you say, I'm going to build a subdivision, and you say, okay, I got to get a boundary survey, I got to get a topo survey, I got to get a tree survey, I got to get environmental, I got to get hazardous waste environmental, I've got to put all that together, have a meeting with the city, then we do our plans, you submit two or three times, it takes two months, and reviews these days with all the workload, I mean, it's two years before you build a home, you know, after you submit, and so I would say, you know, you're, you're going to get, you know, a couple hundred a year or something, till you start multifamily, so it's going to take a while, and it just really helps with the certainty from the development standpoint, that you know you've got more than just five years. I mean, we're not asking for thirty years, it's asking for five, so I wanted to explain that. I think the, the open space, the, the importance of that is two. The, the reason for the allowing staff to review it and, under a minor modification, as per city code right now-
Right.
-as long as anything is under five percent impact into that. The current roundabout is extremely close to the master plan to US one, and so that don't work from a traffic standpoint, DOT will not approve it, so we have to move it back, and, and in moving it back, it even stalls Phase One, that's under construction now, because there's a water line from Phase One that goes out the spine road into US one, and so until we can get this approved, that water line, staff can't approve it, we've got plans in to get it approved, and then Phase Two, on, we're in the sketch plat process, and we can't come back to you to get sketch plat approved, because that spine road for Phase Two goes through this, because when we go to Phase Two, we have to have a second access, and that's to US one. So I want you to understand, it's important to get both of these, and so if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Uh, Vice Mayor, first of all, let me say, thank you for the clarification, that, that helped me a lot. Go ahead.
All right, just a clarification to me, you say it's a fifteen-year project, so does that include the five you already had, and you need five more, or you need, actually, this should have been-
I mean, I'm, I'm thinking it's probably fifteen more, and I'm speaking for myself, not the Garry's, but it, it's twenty-four hundred units and commercial, and we're possibly in a downturn here for a couple of years, I'm not saying we are, but it just ups and downs, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's very unfortunate, this council won't be here. Anyway, anyway, I see no more questions, thank you very much, Rodney, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, next card, please.
Robin Fisher.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Robin Fisher, sixteen-twenty-five Garden Street. As you guys are discussing this, one of the things I want you to think about is, I actually talked to Todd Prokribo of Viera Company, who has all the infrastructure in the world, who's been developing for years, and I asked Todd, I said, Todd, how many units did you put on the ground last year? And he said, we put about four-hundred-and-sixty-three units on the ground, so if you just take that, Viera, which is a, you know, thriving community, and, and got a lot of single-family going on, that was all they were able to put on the ground, and all the infrastructure's in place. This project definitely doesn't have all the infrastructure in place and everything in place right now, so when you think about the timeline, it's just very difficult to put twenty-four hundred units on in the next five years, and as much as you all have been supportive for this, it's very difficult for every time you want to make a change or do something, and don't have the flexibility, that you got to come back in front of council and do it, because I know you supported of it, and you have said yes to everything, but realistic, I like to think that it's going to be twenty-four hundred units in the next five years, but that's not going to happen, not with the economy and how hard it is to get things done and develop, so realistically, I think ten years is, is, is a reasonable time.
Thank you. Uh, nobody else, thank you. Next card.
Last card is Dan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, and I'm not against what they're doing here, I don't know a whole lot about the roundabout situation, but I'm very pleased that Honeycutt has this job, because I've known them for years to, to do a top, top job, top work in their, in the engineering field, so I have no objections to this project, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I agree with what Mr. Jordan said, and Mr. Fisher said, too.
There we go. We move forward. I think we're, anything else you guys want to add? Vice Mayor.
I, I want to make the motion, but I want to understand, if, if we modify the request, we can do that for instance, instead of saying ten years, fifteen years?
All I can tell you is that the recommendation you received from your planning board was based on ten years.
But there was, there was a request from the applicant for ten years, so-
Even if it wasn't a request, it was a statement of what he saw as reality, I'm good with ten, I was originally thinking five, but I, does it really make a difference, except it keeps them from having to come deal with this, and, I mean, whoever's here in ten years versus fifteen, I don't know that it really matters, and if it's going to benefit them, and they think it's at least a fifteen-year project, why do we, why do we not go that direction?
And, and that's where I am, so I'm, so if, as you say it was a recommendation for staff, we can do whatever we want to, as long as you got a majority doing it.
Right, it would take a majority vote, I just want to let you know that the recommendation from P&amp;Z, which I believe was to approve this, was based on a ten-year request.
Okay, that was a recommendation, so ten or fifteen?
I thought they asked for ten, I'm confused, I thought they, they had requested ten.
Yeah, the, the development agreement said ten.
They requested ten.
No, I'm saying-
That, I, that's where I'm confused, where are you getting fifteen from?
From what Rodney just said.
Okay, I was taking that as conversation, not that they were requesting that personally.
Okay.
Yeah, the development agreement says ten years, correct? And that's my question, since the development agreement came in at ten years, and staff agreed, and planning zoning agreed with the development agreement, do we have the authority to say, okay, we want to modify that development agreement to say fifteen instead of ten, based on what we heard tonight? That's my question.
If I can answer that, is you're a council, and you have discretion when you vote, however, the application was for ten, and the recommendations have been based on an analysis of ten.
Why don't we hold it at ten?
Hold it at ten, all right.
All right, the application was for ten, you can live with ten right now, I think that clears, that, that keeps it more simple, and-
Yes, yes.
None of that, you guys come back in ten years, we're not here anyway.
Yeah, we're not, we're not here, so, all right, Mr. Mayor and, and Council, I'd move that we approve Development Agreement number one, that's twenty-twenty-two tranquility, FKA, Antigua B, third amendment.
Second, with recommendations that have been presented before us, correct?
There wasn't any recommendation.
Yep, with staff, with, yes.
Staff recommended approval based on what was submitted to us.
Yes.
I don't think there's anything to add to it.
There's nothing to add.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, okay, so we're-
Just second, with no official comment.
Okay, with second, not adding, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Jordan, we have a second from Member Stokel, roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
No.
One, two, three, passes three to one. With that, it passes, thank you guys, appreciate your moving forward, see you in ten years. I'll be sitting out there with Stan.
No, we're, we're now going to item six A, which is the North Bivard Library District Board.
We, we've been doing big stuff now, move us back to, okay, let me get caught up.
Six A.
Six A, there we are. Okay, sir, go ahead.
Item six A is the term of regular member Susan Noel Copeland will expire on thirty September twenty-twenty-two. Member Noel Copeland has expressed her willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board as a City Council appointee, her application is part of your packet.
Is she here? Don't see her.
No, sir, she is not here. Council, any comments on that, before I go to cards? Member Robinson?
No, just my light was still on.
Okay, Vice Mayor Jordan, you're going to make that motion, okay. Call the cards, please. No cards? Okay, member, Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I move that we approve Ms. Susan Copeland as a regular member of the North Bivard Library District for a two-year term that expires on September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
A vote, a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Stokel, roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. City Manager.
Onto item six B, which is the Historic Preservation Board. Currently, there is one vacancy for an alternate member with a term to expire on thirty-one October twenty-twenty-three. There's currently one application on file for your consideration, Ms. Ula Rup-Crofton, local historic, and an architectural art historian, has expressed her willingness and desire to serve on this board as an alternate member with an unexpired term to expire on thirty-one October twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, Council, see no comments, cards. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I move that we approve Ms. Crofton.
You good?
I'm good with it.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, his light came on late.
Okay, Ms. Crofton has the alternate member to the Historic Preservation Board for a non-expired term, to expire on October twenty-two.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor, a second by Member Stokel, roll call, vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Crofton, unanimously approved.
Onto petitions and requests.
Petitions or requests from the public, there ain't but one person here, you're riding solo.
Stan Johnson, eight sixty-point Set Avenue, and-
Time out, time out, no, we got to go, this is in a three-minute, oh, yes it is, I'm sorry, go ahead, stop the clock, start over.
Okay, all right, Stan Johnson, eight sixty-point Set Avenue, and I'm here to talk about a, a, an email that I sent you, and that it's important, it talks about, especially about the City Manager who, who's left, and it has to do with the SNJ project, which, which I've, I've had five different posters on this, and there's, there's one of them that has about, has to do about sketch plat approved, SNJ Oaks, twenty-twenty-one, no Mockingbird Lane, it's gone, ten-foot access, it's just, just a lot of ridiculous things, fake survey. In this case, the, I'll read to you from this email, because I believe nobody's read this, and, and so I'll, I'll start with the bottom, it says the summary, and it has, has to do with this, the survey, it says, "All the above dishonesty and secrecy results from your refusals," and this is especially to our City Manager, because he's, he's right in the middle of this, and he's getting all kinds of phone calls and emails, and he doesn't respond, he's just been doing this for years, and why, he's beginning from the very beginning of time that he's been here. "Your refusals to cooperate, to seek the truth, to correct errors, and to obey laws, your behavior demonstrates a serious sickness," I'm talking about the guy who just left, City Manager, "sickness in our city government and our society to devoid the truth, to violate laws, and to hurt people, period. Proofs of your sickness are demonstrated by your resistance and failure to responsibly respond to emails, telephone calls, and questions at public meetings since the beginning over a year ago in July twenty-twenty-one, when the sketch plat was reviewed and approved by P&amp;Z and Council in spite of my vigorous objections to your violations of laws, to your violations of laws, violations of laws," is what I'm talking about. Okay, in this case, the city and snow, that's the surveyor, continue to, in their sick behavior, to defend errors, nonsense, lack of due diligence, and so forth about the sur, this, this survey and the violation of laws, although this, okay, so, so I have a list of things, like, for example, the survey shows a fifty-foot right away from Elizabeth Avenue, fifty-three foot, I know it's, it's only fifty feet by, every, I've got at least seven surveyors that disagree with this survey that I know about, and so I wrote here, it says, "Please be advised that your failure to respond to above, blank, 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 according to my recent knowledge from property appraisers, the new owner is the new victim, he paid five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars for this pig in a poke that somebody else just paid ninety-thousand dollars for. Unfortunately, my telephone calls are not being returned, it's, and it's, I got this poster here and so forth, and the city's not responding, responding, and it's going to cause big problems, perhaps tens of thousands of dollars."
Thank you, sir.
So, do something, put a, put a light under this guy.
City Manager.
Onto Consent Agenda Item, City Council, are there any questions of staff for Consent Agenda Items A through D? City Council, does any City Council member want to pull any of the agenda, Consent Agenda Items A through D?
Go ahead, sir. One moment, please.
Is he using paper? You what? You using paper? Yes, sir. No.
Clerk, are there any cards for the Consent Agenda Items A through D?
Yes, sir, we have one individual for all four items.
Mayor, and Council, with your permission, I'd like to read the titles for the record for Consent Agenda Items A through D.
Thanks, sir.
Consent Agenda Item eight A, approved Space View Park alum treatment improvements. Consent Agenda Item eight B, approve the award of LED lighting pollution prevention contract for Morning Dove Treatment Plant. Consent Agenda Item eight C, approve the scope of work for Work Order Number One, comprehensive plan and LDR amendments, scope of work, land use, transportation, and housing. And Consent Agenda Item eight D, approve Resolution Number nineteen, twenty-twenty-two, approving temporary road closure of state roads for special events for Astronaut High School Homecoming Parade on six October twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you very much, Council, I see no comments there, call the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Do your best to stay on topic tonight, we have a hurricane, and there's only four of them.
All right, please listen to what I have to say, I know y'all didn't do anything about what I told you about this-
Well, right, the main thing for you to do is-
Request-
A through D.
Stan Johnson, A through, A through D.
A through D, there's only four.
Now, the first one has to do with Space View Alum Treatment, and in this one is that, is that eight A.
Eight A, you're right, Space View, whatever it's called.
I, I want you to realize that, that this particular pond is an unusual treatment pond, very unusual, it's, it's only a few of them, I don't know, it's the only one that I know of in existence, is Alum Treatment Pond, but what it, this pond does, if you remember what happened to it, is that we had a fish kill there, we had a fish kill because of the sewage going into Sandpoint Park. How did that happen? Well, the thing is, is that, is that our, we have some problems with our maps, mapping of our storm source, that doesn't even show it happening. That so happened that I had a map of it, and it showed, it doesn't show that the sewage, that, that, this, this storm water would go over there, but there's a culvert over there at, in Sandpoint Park, that when the water got high enough, it would go into the culvert and go right into the Space View Park, so we had, we had a, a, a water kill there, I mean sewage, a fish kill. Now, this doesn't sound very important, but, but interestingly, this pond is very unusual, because the water level of this pond is almost the same as Indian River, and sometimes it's higher, and sometimes it's slower, because we have, we have wind tides on the river. What I'm saying is, we don't really have a control structure between the pond and the river. We don't have, we have some kind of control structure, but it, but the water can go in and out of that pond, and what the city of Titusville did, we, when, when we had the fish kill, we pumped water from that pond, and pumped it, and then trucked it to the water treatment plant, understanding what we were doing is a good bit of the water was Indian River water that we treated. So, so think about what's going on this one, I'm not saying I have, I'm not against it, but, but please understand what is going on there. Now, going to the next one, eight B-
Good job.
-has to do with the water resources in Morning Dove, and-
Lighting pollution.
Lighting pollution. Yeah, well, i- is that, is that, what is going on is, is, it's, it's the same Mr. Stoffler's involved in that, isn't it?
About lighting pollution prevention, changing lights.
Isn't Morning Dove, isn't that our, our water treatment?
Everybody's got lights there.
Yeah, so-
And they're changing the lights out.
What, what he, what he has been involved in is, is a number of things are, in leading it, he's been involved in, in this, which you just saw earlier, this right here, in other words, what, what happened, the, the big snafu that happened with, with spraying people with sewage- In other words, what happened, the big snafu that happened with spraying people with sewage, women, children, babies.
Stop the clock. I want you to look at what that says on there.
Yeah.
They want to know, are you for or against the award of LED lighting pollution prevention contract for Morning Dove?
Well, I put neither on that because I'm going to let you know is that I object...
Well, then, if you got neither, there's not a lot to say.
I object.
Start the clock.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I'd just like you to talk about what the... There's only four of them. It's real easy to keep up today.
Yeah. Okay. So, it's not too hard. So, what I object to is who is handling this thing? And the person who is handling it has botched so many things, botched and bungled, and has been dishonest. I mean dishonest in so many things, engineering-wise, that... And including this one right here. This is the sign right here, is that the sewage spray. Apparently, he and our city manager tripped you guys to think that somebody who is responsible party in FDEP said, "It's okay. It's okay to leave the fountains flowing." And I know that because Jolynn Nelson, she's the one who...
Stop the clock. You're not going to talk about lights, are you?
Well, I'm talking about...
You're talking about the spray. I get where you're going with this. Every time you get a chance, you're going to do that. But I'm going to... If you read it, you did read this, right? It does say LED lights. I just want to know, and you say you're neutral, so you could probably move on to C. Start the clock.
Well, yeah. So, I want you to... Y'all be careful about this guy, and watch out what he's doing because he's doing this lighting thing, but is it really absolutely necessary and done engineering-wise? Because he's botched about everything I can think of, big time. I mean, public safety and all that. No, this is public safety, and so was that last sign, that public safety. And he's really botched it. So, I want you to consider that. Now, on the...
On C.
On C, the... What I just showed you on petitions request is something that also that public, that planning department has really botched, and that is the SNJ Oaks review regarding... So, in this comprehensive planning, is that this is being handled by some department that has made some huge mistakes that continuing today to cost a lot of money. And so, these problems are not being resolved. I mean, why don't we fix the problems that we have instead of just looking at new things? For example, I've showed you that there's a number of things that planning is just completely ignoring and violating laws. And this SNJ Oaks is one of the examples in which numerous laws, surveying laws are broken. It doesn't make any sense. In this case, I go to this same group that's handling this comprehensive plan and say, "Look, there's no way I can even draw this survey. There's no way it can be... There's no way it can be staked out. It's impossible. It's impossible." Yet, the city of Titusville still continues to approve this thing, and we may be going soon to lots of money lost, wasted, because it's right now, it's under construction. I mean, they cleared the property, and they can't stake it out. And yet, they're probably will be going for preliminary plat approval. They got preliminary plat approval, which is a piece of garbage. And it's not... And it's still being approved. So, let's go on to the next item, okay?
You gotta like the next one.
Okay. The next item is... Has to do with closure of roads, and I really don't have any problems with that.
I do it.
But I put a neutral on it. So, I would like y'all guys to consider what I've said, shared with you, because we do have problems of in our city, that the city is acting like, hey, there's nothing wrong, but you're living in a fantasy. And that's one reason I'm wearing this shirt, because I was also in the service, and we used MM, or some people used MM to express what's going on here. MM, MM parts and MM things like that, meaning Mickey Mouse. And that's what this city government seems to be handling a lot of affairs, MM-wise. Mickey Mouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve consent agenda items eight A through eight D.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have, from Vice Mayor, I have a second from Member Stokoe on the consent agenda. Roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously. City Manager.
Onto item nine A, which is ordinance number thirty-six twenty-two, modification to section twenty-one dash one B to add criteria to connect to the city utility services' second reading. The city attorney will read the ordinance for this public hearing and final second reading.
Ordinance number thirty-six twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, revising, modifying, and amending chapter twenty-one dash one B of the Code of Ordinances by amending the requirements for water or sewer service to noncontiguous properties within the city service area, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
On August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, the Water Resources Department received advisability from council to modify section twenty-one-one B of the Code of Ordinances. The intent is to modify this section of the code to add a category and criteria for connecting out of the city noncontiguous properties to city utility services, including water, sewer, and reclaimed. The first reading of the ordinance thirty-six twenty-two was held on thirteenth September twenty twenty-two. Based on legal review, the second reading positions the new paragraph at section twenty-one dash one B four in order to meet the intent of council's advisability. The proposed language includes that provisions of these services may not impose any negative impacts to existing customers. This condition is intended to protect the existing customers and allow out-of-city customers the opportunity to access these services as long as sufficient capacity is available. We handed out a corrected copy of striking underlined to city council, and Andy Janister is here to answer any questions that you may have on this ordinance thirty-six twenty-two.
Member Robinson.
I make the motion to approve ordinance number thirty-six...
We have to take a card.
We have a card.
I got you. I got you. I was going to let him finish, and we could always hold this motion. Hold your motion. You will make that motion. And I see no other council, so call the card.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I have concerns about capacity. If you remember, I told you the story that years ago, I was looking at a sewage treatment plant, and it was... Everything was working fine, and then all hell broke loose. And it was just like a sludge. Everything just washed out and went into the waterway there because peak flow, it didn't handle peak flows. But every time it was measured, it was measured, everything was fine. Well, I just read an article that that's what it seems like it's saying, is it's happening in Brevard County, that a number of sewage treatment plants are working fine, are testing fine, except when it rains. It's flushing it out. It's not proper watering. In other words, it's beyond capacity. So, the question is, is what's going on here is how much capacity do we have? I'm talking about even when it rains, because when we have... When it rains, we have massive... We have had massive infiltration problems, like, for example, at Baker's subdivision. And I've seen it for more than a week at a time, sewage coming out of the lift station. Lift station wasn't working, pouring into... Going right into the river. And of course, it wasn't reported, but I saw it. So, capacity is an issue here, and I'm also thinking about, what is the city doing? And we're talking about, we just had presentations about hundred million here, eighty million there, and so forth like that, and all kinds of things, thirteen point five million used on recycling water and so forth like that. Understand this. Listen up. Citywide boil water alert. So, I'm talking to the city of Titusville, and I'm talking about, what in the heck are you doing? And there's not an answer. I'm asking, is there any other city in the state of Florida that has this forelogue virus problem? And the answer I get is yes. And I say, name one. I don't get any answers. This is a special problem with the city of Titusville. What I'm saying is that you can be drinking the water in the city of Titusville, and it will not be... It will be polluted, but you won't find out about it until days later. That's what's happening here. You don't understand it, apparently, because you're not asking Water Resources what the heck they're doing. Apparently, you don't understand it. I've said it several times. We have a condition here in the city of Titusville that is unusual, that I'm not familiar with, this forelogue virus. And what I said is true, is you drink the water, and then you get the boiled water alert days later. That's not right. You should be asking these questions of Water Resources, and the people who get this new utility, they should know about this citywide boil water alerts. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Robinson.
I make the motion to approve ordinance number thirty-two two two, modification to section twenty-one dash one, parentheses, B, to add criteria to connect to the city utility service.
Second.
Got the motion from Member Robinson, and a second from Vice Mayor. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. City Manager.
Onto item ten A, which is ordinance number thirty-seven twenty-two, adopting the twenty-twenty-two CRA redevelopment plan amendment. The city attorney will read the ordinance for this, your first reading.
Ordinance number thirty-seven twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number seventy-six dash nineteen eighty-four, dated August first nineteen eighty-four, which approved and adopted the community redevelopment plan for the Community Redevelopment Agency created on October twelfth nineteen eighty-two, by amending said previously adopted plan. Amending ordinance number thirty-one dash nineteen ninety-six, ordinance nineteen dash two thousand four, ordinance number nine dash two thousand twelve, ordinance number nineteen dash two thousand fourteen, and ordinance number twenty dash two fifteen, twenty fifteen, that updated the redevelopment plan, providing for resolution of any conflicts, providing for ratification of previous actions of the Community Redevelopment Agency and the city council, adopting certain amendments thereto to the community redevelopment plan, and providing for an effective date.
The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on eleven October twenty twenty-two at six-thirty. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning agency, unanimously recommended approval at their twenty-one September twenty twenty-two meeting.
Thank you very much, council. Anything you would add to that at this time? Member Robinson?
I just have one question, and I think that we've talked about that in the CRA, it does go a ways out into the water, does it not? According to the drawing here, is that... Is that... It goes a ways out in the water in the Indian River?
Meaning the map, though.
Yes. It has submerged... That's what I'm drawing. It has submerged land. And in this drawing, it's on page two thirty-seven of our... Is that an increase? I don't think it is, but is that an extension of the landmark? Or is it still the same?
I'm sorry. Is your question, is the extent, the boundaries of the CRA?
The boundaries, have they changed within this request?
No, sir. The boundaries of the CRA have not changed.
All right. Those are my two questions.
Thank you for the question. This is the first reading. No vote, no action. Call the card.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I don't think y'all listened to what I had said last time, because you just voted and you didn't think about it, this citywide boil water alerts. But all these people here in the audience, they heard it. Well, there's only one person there, though, Mr. Johnson, but he was paying attention to it. So, on this CRA thing is that there's a number of things that it's avoiding. It's avoiding it. Didn't, you know, as far as I know, this is in the CRA, this project, SNJ Oaks. And this is in the CRA. It's... If you look in the proposals, it's listed in there, not very strongly, but it is. In other words, what happened here is in the CRA proposal and in the report that you will receive, that P&amp;Z went over. I guess it was P... No, CRA went over last time. And that was you guys, too, since you're in the CRA. So, I'm not particularly happy about what's going on because you're avoiding, and the CRA is avoiding a number of issues that need to take care of. And these are serious health issues that when we're talking about health or public safety, we're spending, what, over forty percent of our budget in public health and safety, and yet we spray women, children, and babies with piss and poop? It's not healthy for them. It's very much against my, I want to say, my religion, my profession, and as a civil engineer. Mr. Jordan's a civil engineer, too. He should be able to say, hey, this is not good to do. I mean, I would think Dr. Stokoe would think it's a bad thing to do. Yet, what the city did is they kept the fountains on as recommended by somehow our wonderful city manager thinks, that's a great idea. This is in the CRA, and this should be addressed right here in this particular item, because we're talking about people possibly dying of Legionnaires' disease. That's a serious matter, and that's what happened in Flint, Michigan. So, we could have the same thing that happened in Flint happen here in Titusville if y'all would pay attention to what's going on, but you don't seem to be doing it, especially our city manager. He seems like he's just in some fantasy land, perhaps in some kind of MM land. So, I want y'all to look at this seriously, and especially stop this possibility again happen, because it can happen again, because it looks like to me it is happening again in your new choices, like, for example, in the SNJ townhomes. I mean, it's the same way. He's not responding. We've got obvious problems, and he's not responding. Obvious. It's disgusting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City Manager.
Onto new business. This is item twelve A, the FY twenty-two Budget Carry Forward List. The FY twenty-two Carry Forward List consists of almost entirely vehicles and machinery having been ordered and purchase orders processed for them. Due to several factors such as COVID pandemic, supply chain disruptions, and world chip shortages, nearly all the vehicles and machineries ordered are experiencing significant backlogs, some in excess of eight to ten months, with specialized equipment being greater than twelve months. Staff recommends that council approve the FY twenty-two Budget Carry Forward List as presented.
Very good, council. Any comments? I take a motion, but I got to do cards, pardon. It's not even cards, it's card. It's when you got one guy out there that... That's a card.
Oh, you call me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Or you can pass if you want, once in a while.
I don't think she even had it. Said I had a card.
Well, maybe you don't.
Yes, we have a card.
Okay. I don't have a lot to say about this, but this... Please consider the things I've said at this meeting as it regards to this twelve A, because it's money, and money is what we're looking at as far as it's being mismanaged horribly by the city and also the interests of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve fiscal year twenty-two budgetary carry-forward list.
Second.
I have a motion for Vice Mayor, a second from Member Stokoe. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
City Manager.
Onto item twelve B, which is architectural styles and styles and guidelines for the city. The city of Titusville applied for and was awarded a forty thousand dollar grant in FY twenty-three for small matching grant by the Florida Department of State Division of Historical Resources to create an architectural style and design guidelines for the city. At the twelve July twenty-two city council meeting, council approved and authorized the mayor to sign the grant agreement and created a budget amendment to authorize the proceeds of the grant. Since the city is a certified local government, there are no matching requirements. Staff recommends that city council approve the award and authorize the city evaluation team to negotiate a purchase order agreement with Johnson, Marion, and Thompson Incorporated
in the amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars for the creation of an architectural styles and design guidelines for the city of Titusville.
Thank you very much, council. Any comments?
I, I do have one question. If, if we've got a grant for forty thousand, is automatically that's what they're gonna get, or do they have to put in proposal? How does that work?
It's up to forty thousand.
Up to.
No, I understand that, but is there a proposal that they have to do, or? Am I confusing you with my question?
We have a consultant that submitted a response to our request for an RFP, and that's what's being decided here today, too.
The grant was forty thousand, right?
The grant was forty thousand.
And the consultant's proposal?
Proposed, uh, yeah, their proposal to us was to, they, they believe, they say that they can accomplish the task.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from council? Call the card.
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, this is, uh, this is, this is actually money, forty thousand dollars. It's actually money, forty thousand dollars. And I've asked for some things to be done. And I think that comparison-wise, it seems like you can spend this money, you could, it could have been spent. I know it's, it's like a freebie, but I, it's not a freebie. It's, it's money that is from, somehow it's from the taxpayers. And I, I object to this because I don't, I don't see it's, it's useful compared to the needs of our community. I mean, the needs of our community very much are in the health and public safety, which I've been stressing to you through a number of items that I requested about stopping the sewage flow to, uh, women, children, and babies, uh, and, and other things, uh, city, citywide boiled water alerts and so forth. So, uh, I, I just think that the city should spend their money more wisely than what they're doing, and this forty thousand dollars is not spent wisely.
Before you leave, you do know it's a grant, right?
Yeah, in other words, it's like a free-
It's not Titusville taxpayer money.
But-
That's important to note when you say-
It is Titusville because we're in the United States.
And it's a, and, and we're the Titusville City Council, and we're gonna do all we can to get things done without Titusville City Council, city citizens paying money. That's a win-win.
But we are paying it. We pay income taxes. We pay taxes.
Bottom line, it's a grant. Thank you. Vice mayor?
Give me a chance here. All right, uh, mayor and council, I move that we award and, and authorize to negotiate an agreement for the creation of architectural styles and guidelines for the city.
Second.
I have a motion for, for vice mayor, second from member Stokoe. Uh, roll call vote.
Oh, member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yeah.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, city manager.
Onto item twelve C, approve the execution of water service agreement for one zero three five South Carpenter Road and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Okay, council, anything? I don't see any. I knew that, but it's, it's my, my, my MO. Uh, call the card, please.
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, and I, and I gave you a, a, some, part of a presentation already about the, some problems we're having with, and I asked about the possibility of, of, does our sewage treatment plant have, have, really have the capacity and how much capacity does it have? And the response I got tonight was zip, nothing, nothing. I mean, he's there. I think he's representing.
The answer is, I'm sure, yes. We, we have the capacity.
Uh, do we have the capacity when it rains?
I'll say yes.
Yeah, you're saying yes, but I don't, I, I, so, so that's-
You want an answer?
That's a question that I, that question I have. And so, I believe that, that, in, in what I talked about, the city wa, citywide boiled water alerts, I believe that whenever we enter into a water service agreement, that we should tell people that they, we are, we do not guarantee the, uh, that, that disposable water is free of E. coli, because we can't. We can't do it because our treatment plant is somehow stranger than a whole bunch of other ones. In other words, when you get your water, when you drink your water, you may find out two days later that it was polluted. You don't get a boiled water alert. And now, we're talking about these citywide boil, we're talking about four log virus. That city of Titusville is one of few, only city I know of that has this problem. We are special, a special, unique city that we do not guarantee that your water that you drink is not gonna be polluted, because we don't test, our test results come back maybe two or three days later. Is that crazy? You darn right it's crazy, because I've never, when I went to edu, when I was educated in civil engineering, we didn't have this problem. Uh-uh, we didn't have it with these citywide boiled water alerts because of four log virus. Didn't exist, as far as I know, didn't exist in West Virginia, maybe existed somewhere in California, and now in, in Titusville, Florida. But, but I think that you, it's, you're under obligation to advise these people when they sign up for, for, for potable water from the city of Titusville, that you don't guarantee them potable water because of four log virus. You don't, you don't guarantee it to them. They should know. And, and I'm asking you to do it. I'm asking you to be fair to these people. And that's for the next one, too. So, I'll, I'll stop there.
Thank you. I was gonna say the same thing. Everything you said there, that applies to the next one, right? No? That's a no? That's a no.
So, uh, mayor, we had also handed out to you a document that filled in one of the blanks that was in your packet. Uh, it was three hundred gallons, I believe.
I think, I think staff is asking for the agreement to allocate three hundred gallons per day of service to the property.
Okay.
So, we need to put that in the motion?
It's, it's in, it's in the service agreement.
Okay, so we don't have to add that verbally in the motion that's already there?
Would be, if you were gonna do that, it'd be motion to approve with the allocation of three hundred gallons per day of service.
Okay, vice mayor?
I move to approve the water service agreement ten, for ten thirty-five South Carpenter Road with the allocation of three hundred gallons.
That's right.
Second.
I have a motion by vice mayor Jordan, a second by member Stokoe, roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, city manager.
Onto twelve D, which is approve the execution of water service agreement for one four, one five South Carpenter Road and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement, and the three hundred gallons is part of your motion as well for this one.
Member Robinson?
Yes, um, if, uh, we don't have any comment, I'll see that we do.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold that motion. Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston?
All right, Stan. It's gonna be the last one. It's gonna be your last moment.
Hey, what happened just a few, let's stand Johnson again. What happened just a few minutes ago is, uh, Mr. Diesel said, we have got capacity. So, if we have capacity, why? Why in the world are we saying three hundred gallons per day? Because there's a number of times that people use more than three hundred gallons per day. Fact is, is that, is that numerous times I've been done FDE per, FDE per, FDEP permits, and what I permit is one hundred gallons per day, per person. If there's four people living there, that's four hundred gallons. If there's five, it's five hundred gallons. I don't know how big a families they have, but I, but Mr. Diesel just told me, he says, we don't have a problem with capacity, yet what we're doing is we're putting a limitation of three hundred gallons per day on these, on these new, new places. I can't believe it. It doesn't make sense what you said, Mr. Diesel. Three hundred gallons per day is a limitation, has to do with what? Capacity, which this, Mandy hasn't responded at all. I don't know, he's doing something else. I don't know if he's even listening.
Dog up here.
Andy? No, he doesn't hear, he's not listening. So, so anyhow, uh, uh, this is an admission of capacity problems. Right there. We have it right now, in this, in this motion that you just made on, on, uh, ten thirty-five South Carpenter Road. You've got an admission of capacity problems, and that's what I was talking about, and there's no comments. This is a big deal. Do we have capacity problems or not? Obviously, we do. When we put, we, we, we put limitations to three hundred gallons per day on a, on a house on Carpenter Road, which, which, which may have four people instead of three people. He's, Mr., this Andy, he's asleep. So, uh, uh, yeah, he is. So, so I'm asking for the capacity, some comments about capacity, because we've got a problem, and you're not listening. Mr. Diesel said there's not a capacity problem. Obviously, there is. So, what are you gonna do? You probably, when I, when I, y'all go sit down, and you won't say anything about it. You won't be concerned at all. You're not concerned about the boiled, citywide boiled water alerts, you're not concerned about the four log virus, you're not even concerned about the hundred and seventy-six parts per, per trillion that was in the national newspaper of, of The Guardian. You're not concerned about any of that. I am, though, and you should be, too. You should be asking questions about that. You're getting paid to do this. It's a joke. It's a joke what you're doing. Fantasy, MM, Mickey Mouse. Thank you. I want you to do something responsibly on this. Get some answers from this guy.
Just for the, for the record, Stan, you, you say you don't talk to someone. You have no idea who I talk to. I talk to the people, the staff, all the time. I get answers all the time. I'm not that guy that walks around blind. I get answers. I wanna know what's going on. And if I'm not mistaken, uh, city manager, it might have been Sean, it might have been you, but it was the last meeting you made, somebody over there made it very clear that we don't have a capacity problem.
No, sir, we don't have a capacity.
And, and I just wanted to make that very clear. I didn't make that up. You know why? Because I talk to people. Thank you. Uh, member Robinson, wait, are you gonna, okay, member Robinson, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I make the motion, uh, uh, the water service agreement for one four, one five South Carpenter Road to be approved.
With the three hundred gallon capacity.
Do I still have to say three hundred gallons for three hundred gallons per day?
Yeah, second.
I have a motion by member Robinson, a second by vice mayor, roll call vote. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan? Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. I believe we are on petition and request, part two. And we don't, right? And we don't have anybody here. You had your part one. You don't have anything you wanna say? All right, uh, mayor and council reports, um, I, as a matter of fact, I'll, I'll go last. Member Stokoe?
Yes, I have a request, now that we approved the budget, to attend the three Florida League of Cities conferences and events that I attend. The Legislative Conference, November thirtieth through December first, I believe, the Legislative Action Days, which will be held April twenty twenty-three, and the Annual Conference, which will be held August of twenty twenty-three, and I believe city manager has budgeted for these. Oh, my gosh.
All right, so we need to do those separate, or we can do them all at one time? Okay, let's approve, uh, need a motion.
Right, I move that we approve the travel requested by member Stokoe.
For, um, League of Cities.
League of Cities.
But I second it.
Vice Mayor Jordan, um, motions, member Robinson seconds, uh, member Stokoe's travel.
We have a card.
We have a card.
Card. Thank you. Um, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Nobody opposed? Passes unanimously. Anything else? Vice mayor?
Yeah, um, I had a conversation with Mr. Parrish, and don't go anywhere, Mr. Parrish, because it's all about you. And I have a concern about, as, as we just talked about, the development, developers' agreement, uh, it was extended to ten years. Building permits are just one year, even though, um, the builder has to go get all other types of permits, and they're longer than the one year. So, I ask that, um, we, uh, ask for advisability of looking at the, uh, building permit, uh, process to see if we can extend, uh, the time from one year to multiple years.
Mr. Jordan, are you referring to our, the conversation about site development permits? Site permits? Okay.
Yes, yes, absolutely. So, I ask for what? Is there a problem?
No, you-
But basically, my question would be is, is this where he seeks, um, a report or advisement from staff? Is this how that would work? I would imagine that's what that is. So, if he could get, um, and I have no problem with that. I don't know, do we need to just give you yes before that, or we need to vote on that?
What I'd probably suggest is, rather than make a motion, because I'm not sure what the viability is, but we can come back to you with a discussion on that code section so council can understand what that section is and requires, and based on that, you could decide if you wanna make a motion to revise the code.
Oh, my gosh. All right, that's fine. Uh, can we do it before I leave council?
You can ask them to put that on the next agenda if you'd like. Don't need a motion. Staff can certainly bring that back to you for discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not a problem. We can bring that back to you at your next meeting.
Okay.
Perfect. Go take a vote.
Positive mindset, what I'm asking, okay.
Basically, we're gonna bring back to you what the code says and our interpretation, how it's, has it applied?
Right.
And I don't have any other direction beyond that, other than-
And, and you can look at the, you know, you can, you can tell us what it is today and also compare it with some of the other permits that the person needs, okay?
We can do that.
All right, thank you.
You good?
I am good. Be safe, yes.
Um, member Robinson?
All right, uh, everything has gone well. I've had a good, uh, you know, we had a lot of activity last week, uh, the budget meeting came out well, and, uh, the mayor and I attended the, a, uh, get, uh, individuals out to vote out at the Harriet DeMore, uh, and Harriet DeMore Museum, which was, uh, which was very good.
And actually, member Nelson was there as well.
Member Nelson was there, yeah, and, uh, uh, we had a good time out there.
Very touching.
It was good.
Very touching. You good? Okay, yeah, we had a lot of things last week, uh, my mayor's report's included. I've never said that, but it's in there. Um, a couple of things I wanna talk about, you guys have already touched on it, but certainly we're getting ready to face a, uh, I don't know if it's a hundred-year storm, but it's a big storm. And, uh, this one keeps moving around a little bit. I think before we came in today, it moved a little more to the east, and our winds could hit Hurricane Force now. Uh, keeps changing. Um, next Thursday, October sixth, is the boards and commissions gathering at the Indian River Preserve, correct? At six o'clock. I just wanna let it be known that I will be there. However, I am like triple booked. I start off with the Parkson Recreation Meeting, which is at four, so that's not a problem, but I'm also in the, uh, Astronaut High School Homecoming Parade.
Ooh.
And I was really trying to not have any conflict, but they asked me that long before we planned this, and then it hit me, oh, my gosh, these are on the same night. I definitely cannot miss the boards and commissions. I wanna definitely show them how much we appreciate them, but that's not like I have to do a song and dance to do that. Give me my minute at the end. City manager always starts it, we'll run it, we'll do dinner. I hope to be there after dinner. Uh, but make it clear when you guys show up, well, he didn't show up. No, he's, he's gonna get there, but he may come flying in off the, off the parade route and just take off. So, uh, I'm looking forward to that. And again, um, just like everything else we do, we take this hurricane very seriously. City manager has done a great job of keeping us up to date. Um, I got to sit in with him briefly on a EOC meeting yesterday, I think it was, um, and, and he's all over that stuff. So, because of that, I'm not gonna comment on the things that we've got going on there. I'll let you comment on all of that.
Yes, sir, I could give, provide council a quick update. Um, the city did declare a local state of emergency today at nineteen hundred. Uh, the city, um, finished work, uh, at the COB today for all nonessential services. We will, city hall and, uh, all of our agencies will remain closed on Wednesday and Thursday. We'll make a call on Thursday whether or not we will return back to work on Friday. The, uh, Emergency Operations Center for the city will, will begin operations tomorrow at eight o'clock and run to seventeen hundred daily. Um, Brevard County will also be closed, uh, Wednesday and Thursday. Currently, there's no evacuation plans for any of Brevard County. They, uh, Brevard County plans to open three shelters in our local area, within the Brevard County area, one central, one south, and one in the north. Um, as the mayor said, the, the outlook doesn't look any better with each update. It actually looks worse. Um, they're anticipating five to seven inches of rain with local rains up to fifteen inches. As you know, the soil's currently saturated from the rainy season, and there will be flooding statewide, there will be flooding in Brevard County.
Well, and, and again, just before we came in for the first time, the new path is taken at where the eyes going through Orlando, which puts us on the dirty side, the northeast side, you've gotta watch out for the tropical tornadoes. And there will, without a doubt, if you've seen anything at all, there's gonna be flooding. There's gonna be flooding here, there's gonna be flooding in Key West, there's gonna be flooding in Jacksonville, there's gonna be flooding. You can't, after being saturated, you can't take twelve to fifteen inches of rain and not have it sit there. So, that being said, uh, continue on, sir, if you would.
Yes, sir, and your next update will be, uh, in the morning after we do the EOC update. Um, and then we will also provide a sixteen hundred daily, uh, briefing as we've done. We're posting all the information that we have available to our social media and website. Uh, second is, uh, previously I had asked that we add a, a presentation to your next agenda, which is eleven October. The presentation will be Brevard County Public Schools would like to provide council a presentation on their budget and mileage rates. They said that they need, no more than fifteen, twenty minutes.
And we can just agree that let's do that?
Um, this will be an action of council to add it to your agenda.
We need to make sure our public has a chance to have a card. So, that being said, um, and nobody has, you're not saying anything about this, are you? Um, is there a card?
Yes, sir, Stan Johnston.
How'd you know there was gonna be that talk?
Stan Johnston, give them five minutes. They talk too long.
Okay. Okay, uh, do I have a motion? Vice mayor has made the motion for BPS presentation. Member Stokoe?
Second.
Has second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes.
It's customary for council to cancel the second meeting in December as it runs into the Christmas holiday. So, uh, staff is requesting that council cancel both the five thirty and six thirty meetings scheduled for twenty-seven December twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Do we need a card? Thank you, sir. I'll be out of town anyway, going on my Christmas cruise. Um, I say, starting, who, who motioned that? Uh, vice mayor motion, member Stokoe second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
He passed.
He passed.
Question?
When he waves at me like that, that's a pass.
Mayor? Um, the presentation thing reminded me, I saw this in the report, did we need to, um, vote on having the Central Florida Treatment Center do a presentation, or is that already happening? It was on a report, the report to say request council authorized, so I wanted to vote on it if we needed to.
Hang on just a second, I already pulled it out.
Page three fifty-five.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure it's done, that we don't have issue.
I don't see it.